Calling the City Council Meeting of Order. Today is Monday, November the fourth, two thousand and twenty-four. Time on deck is five thirty P. M. We will have our prayer by Dr. Janice Myers on Harangeroo United American Freewill Baptist Church, and we'll remain standing for the pleasure of the ladies.
Let us pray. Oh, Lord, you are humble servants coming before you once again, Father, with humble heads, bow heads, and humble hearts, Father. We are grateful for the fact that you have graced us and given us the permission to have a blessed day, Father. We have brought, you have brought us all the way to this point where we're at now, Father. We're in your meeting, Father, that we are asking for your continued strength in our order that we can continue being productive soldiers in the vineyard. Release us from the grips of those sars and emps that attempt to distract us from, from you. Father, allow us to continue standing strong on your word. Those of our families and members of this, at this area and within the council community center, community, Father, we ask that you have allowed the enemy to cloud off of their minds, that they, that you remove the cloud of fog and the cloud of doubt in order that we can continue to return your arms, or that we can continue to return to your arms, Father God. We ask that you keep us calm when the enemy confronts us on a daily basis. That we give the enemy your word that we've hidden it within our hearts for such a time like this. That when I confront the enemy, allow me to speak boldly and in confidence and with authority, demonstrating to the enemy that our hearts and souls are completely yours, Father God, and yours alone. Father God, as you can pour out on us individually, I pray you then pour out into us all together and so we can be on an understanding of unity, to be on one accord. We set aside our prejudices and for the use, for the purpose of getting together within the community and making a stronger community that we live in Kinston. Father, we ask this in all other prayers and this need and needed, in Jesus' name, amen. To the flag of United America and to the republic from which we stand, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all, amen.
Madam Clerk, roll call.
Councilmember Swenson.
Here.
Councilmember Solomon. Councilmember Suggs. Councilmember Seifert, here. Mayor Pro Tem Hardy.
Present. All present and accounted for. Um, just want to make a quick note that, uh, the mayor is on his way. He, uh, ran into a little situation that, uh, but he'll be here shortly, but we're gonna move forward with the meeting. Citizen comments. Citizens must sign in before start of the meeting if they wish to address the city council. Citizens should state their name, address before beginning their comments and may speak up to a maximum of three minutes. Citizen speaking, citizen speaking assistance or asking questions will be contacted by a member of the governing body or by appropriate city staff. Madam Clerk, are there any? Alright, thank you. Adoption of the agenda. If any council member wishes to advise of the agenda, the motion to add or deleting an item will be entertained before the motion of the agenda. Are there any?
Mayor Pro Tem, I'd like to add a closed session for personnel.
Madam Clerk, let the record reflect that we're gonna have add a closed session, um, for personnel.
Yes, sir.
Alright, uh, I want to entertain a motion.
Second.
Motion was made a second, all in favor said aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Minutes. Consider approval of the minutes of the city council meeting held on October the fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Madam Clerk, you'd like to entertain?
The October fifteenth, uh, minutes will be sent under separate covers.
Alright, thank you. Presentation and recognitions. New Residential Electric Load Management Program, Justin Boyd.
Good evening, everyone. Appreciate your time tonight. Uh, wanted to come and, um, present the, uh, new load management program that we've been working on. Um, we are gonna need feedback from our, our customers and residents on, on this program, so we want to get as much information out there as we, as we can. Um, we're hoping to have some workshops coming up as well, so we'll get, um, back to you guys with some dates on those things. Um, but we really just want to get the word out tonight, um, about the surveys and about the due information, um, contained in the program, so we'll go through that. Alright, so we, we have a current load management program, but what we, we tried to revamp that. Uh, so we're enhancing our load management program with new two-way communication switches and excited to do credit. As I said, we currently operate a load management program, but over the last few months, we've done some research and worked to find a more efficient and comfortable program that will benefit us and our customers. The, um, new load switches that will be installed, this will be done at no cost to our customers. So what is load management? Uh, load management is the process of controlling the distribution and consumption element of power technologies in order to reduce electrical demand. And what is the goal of load management? The goal is to reduce our peaks, uh, which occur when all of our customers are using the greatest amount of electricity. And in, by, by reducing those peaks, we strive to hold down the cost of the wholesale power, uh, that we purchase. Quick explanation of demand versus energy. Uh, demand refers to the maximum amount of electrical energy consumed in a, uh, given point in time versus energy refers to the total amount of energy being consumed over a period of time. So we're, we're seeking to reduce the demand, uh, in this program. And what happens during a load management event? We have three different switches, um, well, it's the same switch, but three different appliances that customers can, um, choose to have a switch placed on. That's your HVAC, heat strips, and water heaters. Um, during this event, a radio signal is sent to each switch, which shuts off the power to that appliance for short periods of time. Um, the length of load management events during the summer months are four to five hours, and during the winter months, it's about two to three hours. These events do not occur, occur every day, um, so that's important to know. And then, and really during, when these events are going on, most of the time, the, the customer don't even realize anything's going on. How's it work? So on the central A.C., we are, um, looking at a twenty-five percent control. So basically during that event, your HVAC will be controlled for only fifteen minutes of each hour. The heat strips, your auxiliary heating will be turned off during the duration of the event, but your primary heating source will still function as normal. And on the water heaters, the water heater will be turned off for the duration of the event. Um, but any water that's already heated in the water heater tank, of course, you still go to use that. It just won't heat any more water until the end of the event. Why do we need these new switches? Um, first, the biggest piece of it, this is our final piece of our A.M.I. project that we've been working on over the last several years, is getting those electric and water meters out there, um, as part of our next grade project. Um, so we want to get this, get this next phase, um, finished up and, and complete that project. Uh, these switches provide enhanced technology. Uh, it's a two-way communication switch versus a one-way communication switch that we currently have. Um, the two-way communication switch, basically, it, it helps us identify that the switch is actually working because we have communication back and forth versus just a one-way. Our current program versus, uh, the new program, as far as the month of control and our credits, um, just run through these real quick. Currently, as you see, our A.C. control is a hundred percent during July, or, yeah, July to October. What that means is during these events, we would control the A.C. a hundred percent of that event. So if it's a four-hour event, your A.C. is off for four, for four hours. That's, that's not very ideal. So we, we, we've worked to, to change that. Um, so our new, our, our new, uh, percentage control will be twenty-five percent control. As I said, it will only, it will only be controlled like fifteen minutes of each hour. So if it was a, a four-hour event, we would only control that unit for one hour. Um, but not straight, just in fifteen-minute increments each of the hours. Um, we did alter the month of control there a little bit from, um, July to October. Uh, we've changed it to June to September. Um, your heat strips, the month of control on the heat strips and the water heaters didn't change. Uh, for the heat strips, it's January to March, and on the water heaters, it's January to December, a full year. Um, your credits for the A.C., uh, twenty-five percent control is gonna be eight dollars per month, so thirty-two dollars a year. Um, heat strips, twenty dollars a month, sixty dollars a year. Water heaters, um, which changed from two to five dollars, uh, at, again, sixty dollars a year. So if someone signed up to have all three appliances, um, have a load management switch, they could save up to a hundred and fifty-two dollars a year on their utility bill. So how do we determine the new credit amounts? There are load control analysis, um, considering the number of devices projected, predicted annual savings and our return period. We also researched load management programs of surrounding cities to ensure our credits were comparable and competitive with those cities. And actually, the credits that we are, um, offering or going to be offering, um, actually meet or exceed what we found from neighboring cities. Our project timeline, uh, the surveys are available now, online, and we have paper copies available here at City Hall. And we also are gonna be sending out, uh, sending out mailing inserts that's gonna contain our Q.R. code, so customers will be able to scan that and, uh, sign up through the link that way. Those will be going out, um, in a couple of weeks. We're gonna be accepting responses on, on all surveys through the end of the year. And then our installation process, we're anticipating that to begin late, uh, summer of twenty-five. Uh, one thing to note here, um, we will need to access the home at some point if someone does sign up for this. Someone, a technician, will need to eventually access the home, uh, to install that switch. So that'll be, you know, down, down the line, we'll, we'll get, get that put together and scheduled, but, um, someone would have to be present during the installation process to get those switches in. And these are all the different ways that you can enroll in the program. Um, online, we have a, we have a link there, as you see. Um, customers can go to that link, um, through our website and sign up that way. We, our link, that link is also available on all of our social media platforms, Facebook, Instagram, and Twitter. We also have created a Q.R. code that folks can scan, and it'll take you directly to the link to be able to sign up. Again, that'll be included on those inserts that we send out in the utility bills. Uh, anybody watching at home, or that may watch this later, can also scan that on your screen. It will take you to the link as well. Um, our, our good and reliable customer service, nine-three-nine-three-two-eight-two. We're also taking, we'll, we'll take your call over that, um, over that number, and we'll take down your information, make sure you get signed up. And then again, paper applications here at City Hall that can be filled out and turned in. Um, so we do, uh, we ask any of our customers and, and city residents that are interested in this program, please, please, please respond to these surveys whether you're interested or not, um, so we know, um, the type of, uh, program that we're gonna, might roll out, how many, how many switches we're gonna need to order. Um, anyone that's currently already on the load management program, on any of those old, um, the, of the old setup that we have, we still need to hear from you as well because we, um, these new credits and everything. In order to get the new credits, you will have to have one of the new switches. So if you're already on the program, please still fill out the survey, um, in the interest form so that we know to reach out. And that's all I've got, so I'd be glad to answer any questions if anyone has any. Yes, ma'am.
I would like to ask about the, the newer type of water heaters, the renite type of water heater. Would that be part of this program?
If it, if it's a gas water heater, it would not.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, so it's, it's only talking about electrical water heaters.
Mr. Boyd, uh, as far as the old, the customers on the old program, uh, I, I heard you say we're gonna do an insert in, uh, the billing. Um, is it possible that they can do a trial test run so we can have other customers after, if they've already owned the program with the, the old program, the, if they decide to try the new program? Can we do a trial run and then maybe have them come back and speak to the community or a couple of residents to let them know that, you know, it really works and it's a cost savings to the rest of the community? Because what happens when we implement and everybody in the community wants a, a switch and we haven't prepared for that?
Sure. Um, yeah, I, I think that's something that we could do. Um, reach out to some of those customers that are currently on the program to speak about their experience so far, and then, um, I, I think we could, you know, have a new switch installed and, and let, and get there and put on that as well. I don't think that'll be very hard.
Mr. Swenson, if I could add, um, what, what's important to us for the survey, it kinda helps us gauge the interest in the program.
Right.
Under the current load management program, we've got over a thousand people participating and getting credits. Uh, and we think especially with the partial A.C. controls, that we'll get even more people interested, uh, in ta, in taking advantage of this. The, the credits on a monthly bill in the winter, if you, if you did do the heat strips, if you have, uh, a heat pump and the water heater, you get twenty-five dollars a month for an average utility bill. That's over a ten percent reduction in your utility bill, uh, just by participating in this program. So what we hope to do by this is, is kinda gauge the interest so we know how many switches we need to order to start with. Uh, after we start this program, customers can continue to request to be added to the program at any time. So we want to see how many people are interested upfront, and then we will work with those folks, and then we will have switches available after that as people change their mind and they want to participate. We'll have things available to be able to do that.
Well, Mr. Miller, I, I was just hoping that we could get more people to advocate once this, like I said, the cost savings. And if you had your old customers that can say, hey, I was on it already and I saved, and now with the new program, I'm saving a little bit more money, there'd be more cheerleaders for out there in the community, and then we have more people willing to sign up. I'm looking at a, a larger amount of people that would sign up hopefully to have a cost savings throughout the community because we're still getting labeled as our utility bills or our electric bills are so high, and we just want something or someone else to be a mouthpiece for us instead of our own sales saying, hey, you know, this, this, this. They could have somebody else that lives beside them, their neighbor, and say, well, hey, it did save me some money or it was of, a benefit for me to do it. I just want more people to be on board with this, that's all.
Yeah, absolutely, and since you brought up our high utility bills, it's a great chance to remind people that today with the rate increases that Duke Energy has done over the last few years, that our residential rates are about twenty percent lower today.
That's right.
So these savings are in addition to having a lower rate than Duke Energy has today.
And not only because they've had high, um, increases, Duke Energy that is, but the city has kept their rates the same for fifteen years. That's a big deal to have that kind of rate control.
Well, we always promoting public power.
That's right.
We're always doing that.
Anything else on the council?
I would like to know if you don't qualify for the water heater, could you still be a part of the program from the other?
Uh, yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am. You don't have to do all three. Uh, if you have gas appliance like you were, um, alluded to there, you can sign up for the other appliances to be managed.
Thank you.
Anything further from the council? Alright, Justin, thank you so much for.
Thank you, guys.
Presentation. Public hearing action. Conduct the public hearing and consider approval of denial of rezoning request for property from R.A. six residential to I.B. industrial business. Ms. Elizabeth Blunt.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Council. This is a request for rezoning at, um, twenty-two thirty-three Highway two fifty-eight South by C. Dwight Howard. Staff received a request from Mr. Howard to rezone a partial lot from residential district to industrial business. This is the location of the property that's located on Highway two fifty-eight. The surrounding zoning districts are B-one general business and R.A. six residential to the north, I.B. and agriculture county zoning to the south, um, R.A. six residential, I.B. to the east, and B-one and I.B. to the west. The proposed rezoning is intended to be, um, transitional land use district located adjacent to mayor, major thoroughfare. If you can look at the parcel, it's kinda split. Half of it is R.A. six, half of it is I.B. And what the property owner wants to do is convert the R.A. six to I.B. So the entire parcel will be zoned I.B. This is a map of the comprehensive plan of future land use. Just like the zoning district, the comprehensive land use is also split half, too. Half of it is mixed use and half of it is rural residential. Although the proposed use is not in compliance with the city's comprehensive land use, which recommends primarily commercial with multifamily residential use in the mixed use sector and low-density residential agricultural uses and rural residential, nonetheless, this is an existing building and it is currently vacant and can be repurposed for a light industrial land use project without infringing on the existing residential dwellings. Here's a picture of the property. Here is a rezoning map showing the location of the building on the parcel as well as the flow of traffic that will be, um, within the building and outside of the building. Included in your package was a list of permitted uses and uses that require special use for the proposed zoning district. Please keep in mind that any of those uses may operate in this zoning district once the rezoning is approved. The planning board voted that the request was consistent with, um, the comprehensive plan because of the existing use in infield redevelopment and recommended approval. Staff is of the opinion that the rezoning is in compliance and can also be recommended for approval. With the council's motion, please state whether the request is consistent or inconsistent and either the approval or denial of the request. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Anything further from the council?
Ms. Blunt, is this the old Roger Carter property?
So I was told, yes.
Uh, the issues that we had talked about one time before, the extra stuff parked out there, has that been removed or?
Yes, it has, completely been removed.
Anything further from the council? Uh, if there's nothing else on the council, we're gonna go into a public hearing. Would there be anyone to speak in favor of or opposition of? Would there be anyone to speak in favor of, opposite? Just step over to the mic, sir.
Good evening, my name is Zalhwy, and I'm a local attorney, for those who don't know me. I'm representing Mr. Howard, we're the ones that filed this, uh, action. And basically Roger Carter, you're right, it was Roger Carter's, uh, they did modular classrooms, and that building's been vacant for a very long time after Mr. Carter's business went bankrupt. It's been used for storage, and Mr. Howard has an opportunity to sell it now. And the person who wants to purchase it wants to do a project inside the building, wholly inside the building, and so we're asking for the rezoning for that purpose.
Thank you, sir. Would there be anybody else to speak in favor of or opposition of? Anyone else to speak in favor of or opposition of? Alright, if not, then we're back in the regular session. Uh, Ms. Blunt, you need to add anything?
No, sir.
Anything else further from the council? Alright, I will entertain a motion.
Motion.
Can you say that it was consistent or inconsistent with the comprehensive plan in your motion? And whether you recommend approval or denial?
Repeat your question one more time, Ms. Blunt, for me, please.
It's a statement as far as what you need to put in your motion, whether you, it is consistent or inconsistent with the comprehensive plan use and whether you recommend approval or deny.
Uh, make a motion that we approve it, uh, consistent.
That it is consistent.
That it is consistent, and we make our approval to approve.
Second.
Second.
Motion was made a second, all in favor said aye. Motion carries. Action agenda. Consider approval of engineering service agreement with the Wooton Company for the upper new sewer rehabilitation replacement project. Steve Miller.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, for the upper new sewer project, uh, the city was approved for funding to replace approximately five thousand seven hundred feet of twenty-four-inch diameter sewer pipe along the Neuse River between Atlantic Avenue and the Kinston Community Center. Uh, North Carolina Division Water Infrastructure issued the attached funding offer that we have in the agenda, uh, in August. The funding is in the amount of six million two hundred ninety-two thousand four hundred and fifty dollars. It includes twenty-five percent principal forgiveness and the balance of the twenty-year one-point-zero-three interest loan. Uh, there will be a closing fee that we will need to, uh, pay as well of two percent of the amount, uh, when we accept the grant. The funding that is being provided covers the full cost of the project. Uh, the project was evaluated in two thousand and twenty wastewater asset inventory and assessment project by the Wooton Company. Uh, Wooton conducted the assessment. They identified the types of improvements that were needed and prepared preliminary engineering cost estimates. They also assisted us when we applied for the funding, so they've been involved in the process on this project all the way through. Uh, tonight, we're here with an engineering service agreement for the design and construction administration services for the project. The agreement's been reviewed by our staff, it's recommended for approval. The first task in the agreement is completing an engineering report that has to be submitted by January first of two thousand and twenty-five. Uh, that would meet the requirements of the funding agency. The cost of the engineering services agreement is five hundred eighty-four thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. This amount's a little bit lower than the amount of funds that were included in the funding application. Uh, we get a portion of the original project is the area that experienced a pipe failure during Tropical Storm Debbie and has been contracted for repair already. Donna Goodson is. Donna Goodson is, uh, working on a, a project budget that, uh, believes on your agenda tonight as well. Uh, the agreement will be charged to that project. So tonight, I'm respectfully requesting city council consider approval of the engineering services agreement with the Wooton Company in the amount of five hundred eighty-four thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars.
Anything further from the council?
The, um, damage that was done by the storm, is this also inclusive in the five hundred eighty-four thousand dollars?
Yes, the funding agency has agreed to cover this under the amount that was part of the loan. So we're, we're glad to hear that.
Anything further from the council? Entertainer motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion was made a second. All in favor say aye. Aye. Motion carries. All right. Item number two, consider approval of engineering service agreement with the Wooton Company for the Heritage Street Sewer Replacement Project. Steven Miller.
Thank you. Very similar to the last project, uh, the city applied for and has received approval or an offer, uh, to fund the replacement of about six thousand feet of eight thousand in, uh, of eight inch sewer pipe along Heritage Street between Washington Street and King Street through downtown. Uh, Division of Water Infrastructure issued the funding offer. The funding amount for this project is three million three hundred eighty-four thousand seven hundred and fifty-six dollars. It again includes a twenty-five percent principal forgiveness and the balance of the twenty-year loan at one point zero three percent interest. Uh, there is also a closing fee on this project for two percent as well, just like the previous project. Uh, the Wooton Company again for this project identified the scope of work and did the work through the wastewater asset inventory and assessment project in twenty twenty. Uh, so they have been involved in that. They assisted us again with the applications. Uh, so tonight, uh, we are presenting an engineering services agreement for the Design and Construction Administration Services on this project. Uh, the agreement's been reviewed. It's recommended for approval. And just like the other project, they're on the same funding cycle. Uh, they have to have an engineering report by January first. The cost of this agreement for engineering services is two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. This is the amount that was included in the funding request and award and will be in the project budget, uh, that you'll also be considering tonight. So we're requesting council consider approval of this agreement for Heritage Street Sewer Replacement, uh, in the amount of two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars.
Anything further from the council?
Steve, with this project, um, have we had any talk with DOT about repaving, um, or where we at far as if we're gonna tear up the street, is there a chance that we can get that road repaired or repaved while they're doing work, uh, well, after they do the work on Heritage Street?
Our, our plan on this, this portion of Heritage Street is city maintained. So DOT is not in the picture on this. Uh, but our plan is we are also working right now, we're doing condition assessments on stormwater. Uh, they've been through and TV'd the stormwater systems through this same area so we can see what we need to fix there. Uh, we've already looked at the water lines in that area. So our plan is to work on all of these parts of the pipes, uh, through those same blocks. In the end, the city will resurface those streets when we finish all the utility work. So we'll do it as part of the same project and get it resurfaced.
Anything further from the council? Entertainer motion?
Second.
Motion was made a second. All in favor say aye. Aye. Motion carries. Item number three. Discuss the final rule for lead, lead service line replacement. Inventory status and options for the replacement of uncomfortable lead service lines. Steve Miller.
Thank you again. Uh, this topic's a little more involved. So if you have questions, we go through it, please ask. Uh, the lead service line rules, uh, initially they were, they were begun in nineteen ninety-one. Uh, lead service lines for water systems were used as far back as nineteen hundred. Uh, they were used up until nineteen eighty-six when EPA banned the use of lead in service lines for, uh, water systems. But anytime before that, anything that was installed could have had lead in the service. They could have done other materials as well, but there's a possibility the lead was used during those, those replacements. Um... There it goes. All right. Um, so what we're looking at tonight is, is the first steps in this process and it's a long process to meet the requirements of this new rule. Um, the lead types of things that could have been used in the past where the whole pipe could have been lead, it could have been solder. Uh, there were galvanized lines, almost like aluminum that would have lead lining in them. Those are possibilities. Uh, and it was done for any services that were two inches or smaller. Over two inches, they typically didn't use lead at all. Um, so it could be in any of those locations. Um, like I said, in nineteen ninety-one is when they first put a lead rule in effect. Now keep in mind that the ban was five years before that. But nineteen ninety-one is when the EPA started passing rules requiring systems to test and go out and see what lead levels are in water and make sure that things were okay. The sixty-eight thousand systems across the country had to start doing sampling and notify customers and do additional measures if they were having high lead levels. Um, they did some different little minor rule revisions in two thousand and two thousand and seven. Uh, then they started working on the current revision in twenty fifteen. Twenty fifteen is when Flint, Michigan had their issues up there. And there were several factors that played into what happened. Uh, but basically they had changes in their source water, changes in their treatment, and it resulted in higher lead levels in their system. Um, so at that time, EPA started working on this revision. They just in October this year, on October eighth, issued the final rule. So it took them nine years to put together this rule revision that we now have to deal with. They've had preliminary findings out there that we've had to work through, that we've already started doing things on. Um, and we'll talk about that a little bit more. Through all these years, all these things we've done, Kinston has never had a, an exceedance issue, anything that triggered any additional work that we had to do. Under the old rule, when we did sampling, what the, what the EPA required, based on your size, however many customers you had, you had to do so many samples. Uh, the system had to go identify services that were installed when lead was used, find some that were galvanized or may have had lead in them, and then do sampling on that every year. So those are, that's how we did sampling before. That was a requirement. Uh, and again, through all that time, we didn't have issues. We haven't had to go to any corrosion control or any extreme measures because we haven't had those types of issues down here. With us being on well water all that time, that water's very safe. It's not usually very corrosive. Even switching to lava, we haven't had any issues. We continue to do lead monitoring every year, but we haven't had any violations. What we're doing right now is just identifying service materials, which is a major part of this new rule. So, one odd thing about lead service testing or lead level testings, this is the one test that we've had to do over time that are tests that actually the customer has to do in the house. Everything else we test, we test out on our system. But because the concern is the service lines going to the house, the samples actually have to take place in the house. So we've had to work with customers that were willing to work with us and do samples because it's an involved process. It's not simple. Um, and find ones that were willing to do that with us. All right. So one of the main things of this new rule is doing a service inventory. Like I said, under the old rule, we just had to find enough services to do sampling. Under the new rule, we have got to identify every service material, services that were installed prior to nineteen eighty-six. So where we didn't know before what services might be, what they were made of, we now have to go out and find out. Uh, if you recall, about two years ago, we went out and got some funding to help us start doing this and start identifying things to meet the first requirements of the rule. So we've been working on that. Uh, but in the end, anything that we don't know, we will have to go find out if it's really lead or not lead or if it's galvanized or if it has to be replaced. So there's a lot of work left to do. The first notifications and the first inventory, the inventory had to be done October sixteenth. We met that deadline. We turned that in. Um, then after that, we will continue to do updates. We will be doing more reach outs and touching services and seeing what materials there are and we'll update that inventory, uh, over the next three years. You've got three years to continue to do that. Uh, the inventory is on our website. So customers can go there, they can search through it, buy their address and they can find their address and see if they're on the list or not and what information we have today about their service. So all that is currently available to them. After we get through all of this identification work over the next three years, then we have to move into replacing services. If any line is identified as lead or as galvanized requiring replacement according to the EPA's terminologies, then those lines have had, got to be replaced within ten years. And what they determine a replacement to be is from the main out in the street to the meter, which is the part the city maintains, and also from the meter to the building. Which in areas like Kinston, that's the part of the service line that's maintained by the customer. So we don't have the right to go on their property. We haven't ever been going on their property fixing their side. That's their part of the service to maintain because it's on their property. So it's a little, it makes it tougher on us. Some areas like in the northeast, big cities, areas like that, those systems may maintain all the way to the buildings. Uh, because a lot of times they will put the meters inside the buildings because of the freezing that they see in those climates. But down here, it's, it's a little bit different. Um, we are not required to replace the customer side by the rule. We're not required, required to pay for the customer side being replaced. But in order to satisfy the requirement of the rule, the entire service has to be replaced, one way or another. So they, they really put it back on systems to figure out how do you do this? They didn't tell you, yes, you do it, yes, you pay for it, or the customer pays for it. They didn't say anything, just that it needs to be done. So they left it very vague. So that's why we're here tonight. Uh, there are some funding programs out there to help with replacements. Uh, we'll talk about that a little bit more. The funding programs that are out there are fairly limited. And when you do that type of funding, they will only pay for the work if the entire service is replaced, both parts, one way or another. It's the only time you can get the money to repay, recover the cost for it. All right. So where are we today? We did the initial inventory. Uh, in the initial inventory, the company we had, they used a process that EPA had approved to do spot sampling and try to classify services by that as far as whether they were gonna have to be replaced or not. Uh, under that program, and they're still doing, they've still got a few more left to do, uh, they had tested over three hundred services uh, that we at that point did not know what they were. And what they found, twenty-four of those three hundred plus services are lead services. So they will need to be replaced. A hundred and three of them are galvanized requiring replacement according to the EPA rule. So combined, that's a hundred and twenty-seven out of the three hundred that are gonna need to be replaced. The remaining part of those services, a hundred and, well, seventy of those are not lead and have no lead material and don't have, we don't do anything further with them. We're done with them. Uh, so that's what we kind of expect as we move forward through this. There are over nine thousand services today that we do not know what type of materials in. So those are the ones we're gonna continue trying to test and find out what the materials are. If it comes out like the ones we've already done, then about a third of them or so is probably gonna have to be replaced. But it, that's a big unknown. That's a lot of services to go through. So we're working through that right now. Um, like I said, the inventory, we have it in our office. We'd be glad to talk with people about that. They can call nine three nine three two eight two. They'll get them to the right staff if they have questions specific about theirs. Uh, and again, it's on our website too. Uh, by mid-November, anybody on those three parts of the list, that are confirmed lead or galvanized or unknown, will get a notice from us stating what we know about their service, which of those categories they fall in. Uh, it talks to them a little bit about what is involved if you, if they have concerns about lead. Uh, it'll tell them what we're gonna do next. Um, there's several things that, that we can work on. Um, we can try to identify these ourselves if we're doing. If a customer knows that they've changed their service, they can tell us. And then we will record that and that's good enough for EPA. So if they've had to replace their service, maybe they had a bunch of leaks and they had it replaced by a contractor, that's great. If they wanted to let us know that, then we can take them off the list and they don't, they won't get more notification or anything like that because they don't have to worry about it. Um, let's see, anything else on that? I think that's all I have on that. Let's move on to the next one. So talk about costs for this. Um, just general, we, we don't have firm costs on these things. Service lines, obviously the distance from the main to the building vary greatly. Uh, some buildings are right on the back of the right-of-way like downtown. Some buildings are maybe a hundred and fifty feet up in the property. So it's a longer line. Um, but just saying in general, if, if it costs two thousand dollars to replace the whole service, uh, it'd be split probably fifty-fifty. There's a little more work on the city side in the right-of-way because we have to tap the main and do extra work there. Uh, but the customer side is depending on how much distance there is and what the cost will be. Um, if we had to do all the services that were unknown lead or galvanized on that list today, you'd be looking at about nineteen million dollars to replace those all. The replacements are over ten years, so it's not at one time. Uh, but it's still a significant amount of money that would be invested to cover the full replacement cost of those services. If the third that we found today of the unknowns need to be replaced, if you're only a third of that, you're still talking about silver six million dollars that we'd be looking at over those ten years. Yes, sir.
Question, Steve. You said there's a requirement by the EPA, right? So if we do our part and the owner don't do their part, what happens?
If, if the owner does not do that part, it depends on why. If, if they, if we offer an opportunity to help and change services and they refuse, then that's on them. And we don't have to do anything further with that. If the property ever changes hand, then we gotta start back over and notify the new property owner and go back through it again. But the, the property owner has the right to not let the city on their property to do any work to change the line. So that's up to them. Um...
But the EPA won't punish the city in no kind of way, will it?
If it's not replaced and it's because of cooperation, the city doesn't get punished. What the city will have to do is continue to provide an annual notice to that customer every year that that line may be lit. So we, we're stuck in that loop forever. Or at least until we get it changed or there's other information on it. All right. So, like you said, there are a couple of funding agencies out there, programs out there that have been available. They have a find and replace, which that's the qual, that's the group that we would fall in right now because today, we don't know what every service is. Uh, so you could get two million dollars, uh, and that involves you can go out to each service that you don't know. You find out what it is. If it's lead, you can go ahead and replace it. So it's two million. It's, like I said, it won't cover everything we've got to do, but it might be a starting point. Uh, the other program they have, once you've completed your inventory and you've touched every service and you know what they are, you can apply for five million dollars for replacements only. Um, we've got three years to work through this. Whether those things will still be in place when we get through touching all our services and finding out what they are, I, I can't guarantee that. We don't know. But there may be other opportunities out there as well. Any of, either of those, they will only pay for the work that's done to replace a service if that whole service is done. So we, if, even if the customer refuses, if we do our part, they won't pay for the work we did on our part if the customer's part's not done. So it's another kind of variable that's thrown at us if we try to go out and get this funding. All right. So the big question we're really after tonight is can the city help customers? Do we want to help customers with trying to accomplish their part of the replacements? Uh, the reason we're kind of asking this now is we are in the process of sending those notifications to customers if they may have lead in their service line. So if we're gonna have, may have an opportunity, we'd like to let them know that so they can let us know. So at this point, what we've kind of put in the notices, they haven't been sent out yet, is basically if they want assistance, to talk to us and let us know. So we can figure out what we're gonna be doing. But, but we as a utility system and elected body, we've got to figure out what it is we want to try to offer. Um, you could offer nothing. You could make the customers do it all. Uh, even if we have the customers do it all, maybe we can have a way to offer them payment arrangements where they could make payments over period instead of doing it all at one time. So there may be a way to do that. Um, we still, we have other things that we could offer. Um, you know, may, maybe you offer some type of assistance for folks that are truly in need, uh, where they don't have to pay it all off. Maybe they pay a part of it, or maybe there's a way to do it where they wouldn't pay. Uh, I don't know what that looks like. That's kind of gonna be up to us of what we wanna try to do and try to help folks and how we set that up. Um, we talked about payment arrangements. We talked about doing a grant. Um, and I said, the customer can refuse, uh, and that's, that's fine. That's, that's a right. Um, but I think if we tie our assistance to letting it be done at the same time we're doing our part, that would make it a lot cleaner for us and our folks to be able to do it at one time and get it done. So, again, all, all the services we got have to be replaced over ten years. They're gonna wanna see progress, that you're getting ten percent each year. If you get more than that in the early years, that's great. Get you a little bit ahead of the game, but that's what they'll be looking for. And again, the first year that you have to start doing replacements is twenty twenty-seven, so it's not right now. But we, we know how long it takes to get funding and get it in place and be able to use it. So, we do need to be working on the funding side pretty quick here, if we're gonna try to have it in place to be able to start using it. So, I'll be glad to answer any questions, concerns, comments, other ideas. Uh, I'm all ears.
Hey Steve, just one, one other thing. Uh, now, these, these are homeowners or, or these renters, uh, we applying to everybody?
The requirements we have for notices are to customers.
Right.
So, whoever's in the property is who we send the notices to. So, we're gonna send the notices to the address of the property. And if that's the owner, great. If they've got a renter, it goes to them.
Okay.
Um, if we have to access properties to do work, at some point, we're gonna have to talk to the property owner and get their permission.
Can I tell you about the council?
Okay. And again, just remind people, what we're after right now is just figuring out the materials that are in the service lines and how to get them replaced. Uh, again, today, and we have not had any tests that are above the accident levels. We don't have any real issues that we have to address further. Um, everything we've been testing over the years has been fine, so this is just identifying where lead is in the system, so we can get it out, so we don't have any future problems.
And Steve, remind the audience what they'll, they'll get in the mail. They'll get the, uh, the notice.
Right. Over the next, uh, two weeks, by mid-November, anybody that is on the list, if I go back to that. Anybody that's been identified as lead, having a lead service at the property, a galvanized needing replacement, or unknown. Those folks will get a notice from us, telling them specifically which group they're in and what the next steps would be. So, that's what'll be in the notices.
Uh, thank you, miss. Oh, yes, I missed one.
Steve, I would just ask that you keep that out in the forefront, so we keep talking about it, so people will get the property owners, maybe the landlords, they'll pay attention and hopefully stay involved, so we can do it. The more we can get signed up in the beginning stage will be very helpful for the city as well as the residents here in Linnor County, well, the city of Kinston. So, I just think if we can keep shooting public announcements out that we're, we're trying and wanting to do this and get help from the community, I think that would be great.
Absolutely.
I concur also, because, you know, it is a health hazard if the owner does not want to move forward to have the process, you know, correct it. And, um, I agree that it's good to bring all this public, so that the people who have problems with lead will probably, you know, be more will, you know, it'll be easier for them to say, yes, let's move forward and try, if they cannot do it themselves, try to get funded. So, this is a good thing that we're gonna do.
Okay. From the comments I've heard tonight, it seems like there's some interest in seeing if we can offer some type of assistance or some program. So, we'll work in that direction and see what we can come up with, and we'll come back to you with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
Alright, good to see everybody. Good to be here. Uh, I see it's pretty light here today. I don't know where everybody is. Alright, good to see y'all. Moving on to item number five. Consider-
Four.
Four. Item number four. Consider Parks and Recreation Rental Policy Update. Uh, Scott.
Hey, Council, um, thanks for tonight. Um, I had the request for, at our last council meeting, um, on our Recreation Rental Policy Update. Um, we were tasked with, um, looking at shelters and large shelter rentals and doing a policy update. Um, we took that to the Recreation Commission on October tenth. And we kept, what the commission came up with after several meetings, um, number one, we, we updated the three policies, which were continued, all buildings and shelter applicants must present a valid ID for reserving shelters. A minimum age, uh, to reserve a shelter or building is twenty-one. And the newest one, which our Rec Commission approved, uh, October tenth, was all shelters rented, rented with seventy-five or more people must provide security in the form of an off-duty officer, um, either Linnor County Sheriff's or Kinston PD. So, that was approved by the Recreation Commission, along with our new rental agreement, which just clarifies everything more there. Um, so that, you know, we, I'll entertain questions on that, but, um, really, if you have seventy-five or more people, then we'll ask the, the applicant to provide that, um, you know, about a one week prior to their reservation, so.
Scott, how many day notices do we need or we ask for as far as renting the properties? I had a resident approach me in the weekend and said, it's pretty much like thirty days out.
For, uh, for reservations?
Yes.
Um, if it's just a shelter or building, it's only, um, you know, they can reserve it to Wednesday before the Saturday. So, we cut them off every Wednesday. Uh, if the special event permit is, is thirty days, so if they have a big event, uh, that needs a special event permit, that's thirty days, because it has to come to council. But, uh, yeah, you can come to, to our office on Wednesday and rent a shelter and then for, for Saturday. Now, we cut it off there every time.
On the website, I looked earlier, do we have a actual schedule when, when those dates or the facilities are being rented out at all?
We, we're working on that. Um, we, we've gotta get some new Rec software. So, we're hoping to have that, where you can't, most towns don't do it online, because that's still an issue that we need to do it, but we'd like for you to be able to see it online. So, we're, we're MIS and try to show it. It was up there before our new website, and we've gotta figure that out with our new website, which is still, still a, an issue we're tanker, tinkering with. So, but we do have the new, um, clarification on the application. I think some of the council asked about that last time. And it does have our noise ordinance on there, on the back page. And it also does talk about our special event permit on selling, vending merchandise, which we see, say, see our special event permit, because that's always a question we get. And I know PD's gonna get, get a lot of questions regarding that. So, but, yeah, we're looking for approval of that.
Hey Scott, just wanna say, uh, uh, for, for the audience out there, um, the reason we, uh, implemented these, uh, changes is because some of the incidents have been going on at the parks. So, it's not a direct deflection towards anyone in particular, but these, uh, we think safety first. And, uh, that's why we put these provisions in, in the, uh, requirements for rentals.
And, and just to clarify, too, we also, uh, are making strides with, uh, locking our parks up at night, the ones that are fully able to be closed, uh, Bill Fane Barnett, after hours. So, I think that's helped us, um, and I think it's gonna curb some of that down the road, too, as well.
Thank you, Scott. Do appreciate you and your efforts and entire team over there taking a look at this, reassessing and looking at these fees and how to make it safer in our Parks and Recreation facilities. Um, any further discussion from the council that retain, pertains to, uh, this update? Hearing none, seeing none, entertaining motion to approve.
Motion?
So moved or second? So moved and properly second. Under discussion. Under discussion. Hearing none, seeing none, all those favors say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed say nay? Motion carries. Item number five, consider approval of final expenditure allocation and project close out Opera Final Project. Miss Carol.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. Um, this request is for, um, to close out the, to allocate the final expenditures and close out the project. Um, we have seven thousand nine hundred sixty-three dollars and forty-three cents. And we also have interest that has accumulated since September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, in the amount of fifteen thousand nine hundred thirty-four dollars and sixty-three cents, for a total of twenty-three thousand eight hundred ninety-eight dollars and six cents, that we are requesting to allocate these funds and close out the Opera, uh, project. And this will satisfy our December thirty-first, um, deadline for the city of Kinston to have all the funds obligated. Um, and this will also close the American Rescue Plan at Project C twenty-nine oh eight.
Thank you, madam. Uh, those, the obligated funds that are available, those twenty-three thousand dollars will be obligated to what? Is it Parks and Rec?
Yes, it is the Parks and Rec, and it's for the Immowell Bath House.
Alright. Thank you so very much. Any discussion from the council that pertains to the Opera dollars to close out, twenty-three thousand dollars, what was the exact total?
Twenty-three thousand eight hundred ninety-eight dollars and six cents.
Twenty-three thousand eight hundred ninety-eight dollars and six cents. Um, having said that, uh, if there's no further discussion, entertaining motion to approve.
Motion.
So moved or second? So moved and properly second. Under discussion. Under discussion. Hearing none, seeing none, all those favors say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed say nay? Motion carries. Thank you so much, Carol, and the entire finance team. I think that is a relief off of you guys as well, uh, for doing the good work. I understand that they need to be obligated by December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, and expended by December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. Alright, thank you. Uh, moving on to item number six. Consider approval of project amendment ordinance, Immowell Park Grant, not G nine one eight, one four eight, project. Miss Carol.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, at the October fifteenth meeting, the city council approved the allocation of the remaining corner virus state and local federal recovery funds. And we're requesting that we, um, be allowed to move these funds to the project for Parks and Rec, for the Immowell Park Grant for C twenty, C, C ninety-one forty-eight in the amount of twenty-three thousand eight hundred ninety-eight dollars and six cents. And again, this was satisfied December thirty-first deadline.
Thank you, Miss Bell. Um, any further discussion from the council that pertains to this obligation? Alright, hearing none, seeing none, entertaining motion to approve. So moved or second? So moved and properly second. Under discussion. Under discussion. Under discussion. Hearing none, seeing none, all those favors say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed say nay? Motion carries. Action item number seven. Consider approval of a project budget amendment ordinance for grand estate improvements, G nine one three eight. Miss Bell.
Again, thank you, Mayor. We had six hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars earmarked for the Granger Stadium Scoreboard. And our request tonight is to be able to get an approval for the amendment for the Granger Stadium Renovations Capital Project Fund, um, that we had from November the fourth, twenty fourteen council meeting. And that amount is six hundred and seventy-five thousand.
Thank you so very kindly, and I do appreciate your efforts there. Um, any discussion from the council as it relates to this obligation or this earmark, uh, from Opera dollars from some time back? Any discussion? Any discussion? Entertaining motion to approve. So moved or second? So moved and properly second. Under discussion. Under discussion. Under discussion. Hearing none, seeing none, all those favors say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed say nay? Motion carries. Alright, item number eight. Consider adoption of an ordinance to establish the Upper New Sewer Rehabilitation Replacement Project, S nine two one two. Uh, Miss Bell.
Okay. Um, Steve has already discussed about this project, so we're asking that we, um, consider, um, establishing this project so that he can, um, move forward with construction contracts and other expenses. The city received the attached letter of intent to fund the Division of Water Infrastructure in August twenty twenty-four. The funding will be a twenty-year loan at one point, one point zero three interest, with principal forgiveness for twenty-five percent of the final cost. Um, construction on this project is expected to begin by the spring and twenty twenty-six with completion by twenty twenty-seven.
Thank you, Miss Bell. Anything from the council as it pertains to the ordinance to establish the Upper New Sewer Rehabilitation, uh, replacement? Alright, hearing none, seeing none, entertaining motion to approve. So moved or second? So moved and properly second. Under discussion. Under discussion. Under discussion. Hearing none, seeing none, all those favors say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed say nay? Motion carries. Action item number nine. Consider adoption of an ordinance to establish Heritage Street Sewer Replacement Project, S nine two one three. Miss Bell.
Again, um, Steve has discussed this project. We're asking that we, um, be able to, um, establish this project to create for the Heritage Street Sewer Replacement Capital Project. Um, this project will be funded at one point zero three percent interest loan in the amount of three million three hundred eighty-four thousand, seven hundred fifty-six dollars obtained from the Clean Water State Revolving Fund, with a twenty-five percent of the loan, up to a maximum of eight hundred forty-six thousand, one hundred eighty-nine thousand, eight hundred ninety thousand, thousand to be forgiven and appropriated to the transfer revenue from the water, wastewater fund.
Thank you, Miss Bell. I understand that infrastructure is a big need in, in our community and our, just our community alone. And I understand those capital improvement projects are necessary, uh, for our water sewer projects. Look forward to, uh, talking to you, Steve Miller, as it relates to the projects ahead and what it look like, how we can ask for money, um, at the, uh, state and federal level. So, uh, as I do appreciate that. Um, having said that, I entertain a motion. So moved or second? So moved and properly second. Under discussion. Under discussion. Hearing none, seeing none, all those favors say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed say nay? Motion carries. Item number ten. Consider approval of special event permit at Pearson Park, tree lighting event. Chief, go ahead.
Good evening. Uh, this is gonna be for downtown Kinston revitalization. This request is for Saturday, November twenty-third, two thousand twenty-four. It's a Saturday between six PM and nine PM. It's, uh, turn on the lights in Pearson Park. That particular location's already been reserved by D K R with Parks and Recreation. This does not require a road closure at all. It's an annual event. We've never had issues there in the past. Um, the applicant has hired two off-duty Kinston police officers to help out with that, uh, security there. EMS will be called if needed. No alcohol will be served there. There will be hot beverages served by a local church. Um, the home, hold homeless agreement has been signed, and the city of Kinston will be listed as the insurance, uh, certificate holder when it comes in. Right now, there is a quote included, but it will be, um, under the city of Kinston, two oh seventies King Street Insurance.
Alright, so, um, Madam Attorney, would you like to entertain? Alright, question for you, the, uh, Chief. You said the insurance will come in when?
Uh, it should be in the, it'll be, it will be in the week prior, um, to this event.
Right. I would like to, uh, entertain a motion to approve this subject to the insurance, uh, coming in.
Ju- just to clarify, because this happens often, a lot of times, insurance companies will not submit that certificate of insurance until the day of or two days prior to. So, that's why sometimes when we turn to special events, we're waiting for that CYA to come in with that city of Kinston up there. So, that's just for, for this situation right here, as well as in the future.
Tracking, um, and, uh, understood. So, on the CYA piece, understood. So, I'd like to entertain a motion to, uh, entertain a motion to, uh, approve this subject to the insurance, uh, arriving within the, prior to the event.
Make a motion that we, um, approve it, uh, pending the insurance arrival, um, before the event.
Alright, that motion's on the floor. Is there a second? So moved and properly second. Stand by just a moment. Once we get a quorum, we'll move forward. That motion has been so moved and properly second. Madam Clerk, just standing by, waiting for the, uh, protocol. Alright, we now currently have a quorum. That motion has been so moved and properly second. All of the favor, is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All those favors say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed say nay? Motion carries. Thank you, Chief. Alright, Madam Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. I've got a couple of updates for you. Um, October was Fire Prevention Month. And the fire chief wants to go over some of the things that the fire department did in, um, service to that.
Go ahead, Chief, whatever you're at.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Um, in the month of, uh, October, it's Fire Safety Month. And in, uh, the first week, we had Fire Prevention Week where we had twelve different schools from across the county attend. Uh, with that, that was one thousand and seventy-seven students that attended that week. Um, every student left the fire department with a take-home bag that contained several fire prevention coloring books and fire safety handouts. That was a lot of work to put that together. Um, assisting with the Prevention Week this year was Kinston Police Department, Lenora County EMS, and North Carolina Forestry Service. Um, and some of our local business partners. Outside of Fire Prevention Week, uh, the Kinston Fire Department attended thirteen different community event, events, including Lowe's Safety Day, Lenora County Home Schoolers Safety Day, Georgia K Battle Senior Citizen Fall Festival, Safe Kids Events. And several churches and preschools invited us to come and speak with them and their youth. Um, so all in total, in the month of October, we interacted with over two thousand and thirty-four children and seven hundred and ninety-five adults. So it was a busy, busy month for us. Um, and I only have one more update. Um, very excited to say that we have been awarded the Duke Energy Tropical Weather and Preparedness Response Grant to the tune of twenty-five thousand dollars. Uh, the department is going to purchase life-saving equipment that can be deployed faster and use less personnel in events when resources are already stretched thin. Um, we will be, we're speaking with the contact from Duke Energy. She stated that this year, they have had a very large number of applicants. And we were selected. It was a tough selection process. Um, I would also advise that we will be planning a media release in the future. Um, and they want to present us with the check. We will make sure that all of you are aware of when that will be and its location. So that you can take place and, and be there and enjoy it with us as well. Very exciting news. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you for applying. We do appreciate that. Um.
And Mayor, while Steve comes up recently at the council meeting, the council asked for, just an update on all the resurfacing efforts that we've got going on. We've got some significant funds this year, and Steve just can give you a overview, a reminder about that.
Thank you, Rhonda. Um, I've got a couple of slides, but just because a picture's worth a thousand words. So sometimes it makes it a little bit easier to kind of see how things have played out over the years. Uh, just in general, we backed up the look over the last five years, what we've been doing for resurfacing, just to kind of refresh it and getting what we're doing. Uh, each of the, the previous four years until this year, uh, council has budgeted two hundred fifty thousand dollars a year for resurfacing. Two hundred of that was for general streets and fifty thousand of that was to try to keep doing the hardy road repairs that we've been working on for a while now. Um, this year, council approved seven hundred and five thousand dollars. That included a full twenty-five-year schedule amount of work. Plus the fifty thousand for Hardy Road this year. So it was a significant amount of money that was budgeted and approved for the current fiscal year. Uh, what I've included here kind of shows you when projects were awarded, uh, in fiscal year twenty twenty-one, back at the very top. Uh, the money, the project was bid, it was awarded in May, uh, awarded for three hundred and fourteen thousand dollars. Uh, they didn't get started till September and they finished by the next January. That's pretty typical of what we see in resurfacing projects. And you can see that in years on down there. You notice the award amounts, a lot of times have been a little bit higher than the two hundred fifty thousand dollars. We have scrambled looking through our operating budgets, other areas. If we put together a list, we think it's gonna be pretty close. If we're close and we can make it happen, we're gonna make it happen. And then we've done that with your blessing. We appreciate that. I know our citizens appreciate getting done anything we can do every year, try to get more streets taken care of. Uh, you'll notice in twenty twenty-two, twenty-three, we did not do a contract that year. Uh, it was two hundred fifty thousand dollars. We included that in the last year's project, which was awarded in July. Um, so that was included in that. That's what helped us do a larger project in July. Uh, you'll see the actual award that was done was seven hundred and twelve thousand. That included the two years, the two hundred fifty in twenty-two, twenty-three, and the same amount in twenty-three, twenty-four. And then we also knew that we had this money coming up because we were in July and we awarded that, that we could use from this year. Uh, and then we did a change order in August. We came back to council, added additional streets to that. Um, so the current project that's out for bid is almost one point three million dollars. Uh, I said out for bid, it's actually been awarded. We'll do the change order and that work will start in March. So it will be a significant project that's gonna happen in March. In addition to that, there've been some other things that we've done in the last few years. Uh, we rebuilt a part of Berkeley Street, which is over near Lowe's, behind McDonald's, uh, across from Walmart. Uh, it was in very, very poor condition. Um, we built the extension of Doctor's Drive and Nurses Lane, uh, which has provided another access for all the apartments down there on Doctor's Drive to get out of there. As well as people getting to the, the doctor's offices there. Um, and then Trenton Row, which is a little piece out near L C C, we added to our system. Developer actually paid for that, but that also been done in recent years. Pending work we have going on at this point is the Lawrence Heights subdivision. We're still trying to finish up the utility work in there. But as soon as that is finished, all of the streets in that subdivision are gonna be resurfaced. So that's ten additional streets that we will be accomplishing there. That's being paid for with the money from the utility work. So graphically, this is what I kind of wanted to use the slides for, kind of show you what we've done each year. By color code, you can see we've worked throughout the city in different areas, making street improvements each year. Uh, you'll see quite a bit of green and purple, which is the money that's gonna be, the works is gonna start in March. Um, the red and blue from previous years, when we only had two hundred fifty thousand dollars, we did about three hundred thousand each year, a little bit less. But you can see again, every, every year we're scattering out, we're trying to get as much of the city done as we can and getting the worst streets fixed. Um, this next one, it still shows those streets. I added that other work in there. The pink areas are very small. There's one in the bottom left. There's one in the very, very bottom right. The biggest part is the area of Lawrence Heights off of East Highland that shows up with black lines up in there. Uh, all of that is gonna be done when that utility project's over. So that's a pretty big impact there to get ten streets done at one time. You know, and then again, in the spring, these are the two parts that we, part of the spring project. So these streets, well, you can look for work to start in March next year. Should be finishing up in September and October of next year. So all of those streets will see activity at that time. So we, we hope people will be patient with us as we work through the activity. I know construction's always inconvenience. But in the end, I think everybody will appreciate having those streets with a brand-new asphalt surface on them. So if anybody has any questions, we'd be glad to answer them.
Steve, how many dirt streets do we have in Kinston then? Or unpaved streets in Kinston?
Uh, I'd say there's a little, there's between like fifteen, fifteen to twenty street sections that we have like, uh, that are still dirt.
And for a neighborhood or a street that's unpaved, we normally split that a third, a third, a third, city, the property owners?
That, that's correct. Yeah, the property owner on each side, or each side of the street are assessed a third of the, of the cost if we do that.
Are there any grants or any funds where it might be in a case where the property owners or the community in that section of town might not have their third? That something could be done or some kind of help?
Not that I've found so. It may not be out there, but we haven't found it at this point.
So question, next question, how long does the, I don't know if that's the right question I wanna. Normally, a normal street in Kinston to pave would run about how much? A short street, uh, well, I'm gonna use Lost in Lane for example. How, how long is Lost in Lane in Kinston?
Uh, I hate to throw a number out there at the second. The other thing, if you're gonna pave it, a lot of times you can't just pave it the way it is. If you want it to last, you're gonna have to put stone down and then asphalt. So it's a little more construction cost to it. I can get that for you and I'd be glad to bring that back, but I'd, I'd hate to throw a number out and have it be way off right now.
If you could, and, and then give us a list of the fifteen or the twenty streets that are still unpaved in the community.
Okay.
Steve, uh, while you're looking at those fifteen to twenty streets, can you look at a, a cost estimate, does it look like? And or if it's maintained by the city or not? I'm just trying to figure out how, what does that look like for the private owner or the, uh, city?
I presume, Mr. Swenson, you're asking about city-maintained streets, not all streets.
Yes, sir.
Okay, alright. So we'll, we'll do that. The, even the dirt streets that are unpaid, we still, if they're city streets, we would still pave them. We'll grade them out from time to time. We'll make sure they're filled in and not a hazard. Uh, if the citizens in that area start to have issues with the street, let us know. We'll, we'll be glad to come out there and take care of it.
Thanks, Steve.
Thank you.
So the, um, okay, so we're starting in March to, in the, to the September, uh, timeframe, Lawrence Heights project, um, is that gonna be the, the same timeframe? Is that correct? I just wanna make sure I'm, I'm hearing that right. As, as it relates to those ten streets in the Lawrence Height project, uh, area.
Lawrence Heights, uh, what we're working on right now, the last thing we've got in that project, we're trying to take care of, working with the contractor, trying to test their sewer lines. Uh, as they install them, they didn't test them. Uh, they have got to test them and prove that they did it right before they can pave the streets. It's been an involved process working on that. We've been working with our attorney's office on that, trying to push them to get that testing done. Hopefully, they will pass, but, uh, if they don't, they need to fix them before they do the, the pavement work. As soon as they can get that done, we can get them paved.
Resident, because I was looking at the, uh, the area and it, yeah, it needs to be resurfaced as soon as we can get it out. Because it's, yeah, as told, when I get some, uh, complaints as it relates to those streets, uh, to include myself complaining as I drive over the roadway. And just, just wanted to know where we were, what it looked like, uh, or who we needed to talk to, to kind of encourage folks to, uh, tighten up a little bit and figure out where we're going.
Steve, on Lawrence Heights project, was there a timeline for them to finish this project? And if so, if they didn't finish on time, uh, we do, uh, damage in the recourse of financial recourse back?
They did not finish on time. They are being charged damages every day they're late.
Resident.
They're, they're over a year behind.
That's what I was thinking too, uh, Steve.
And we have, we have met with, um, Mr. Colley on that issue and he is looking into our actions that we need to take to get them moving along. Because that testing has to be done.
So the longer they are not doing the testing, we're be, we're getting paid?
Liquidated.
We don't get paid, we withhold that money from their payments. So they're not getting paid that amount of money.
Hmm. So what happens if they walk away now? I mean, I know we're gonna get paid, but if they walk away and then someone, someone else has to come in and do the testing behind somebody else's work?
What we're, what we're working, the, the process on that right now, if, if somebody's failing to do their, their job they're supposed to be doing or hired to do, uh, they have bonds. And so we will go to their bonding company and advise them that the contractor is not meeting their obligations. And then the bonding company will step in. They may force the contractor to step up and do the work. Or they can go get somebody else to do it, or allow us to go get somebody else to do it and they pay for it. I haven't gone too far, have I?
No, no.
No, no.
I'm talking to the attorney.
Well, I haven't reviewed the contract, but generally speaking, that's kind of how those things, those kind of things are handled. So, uh, I'm trusting that you've reviewed the contract.
So I, when you, when you start that process, there's not really a set timeline. So we're just, we're gonna be waiting on the bonding company's response and see what they decide to do.
Okay. Alright, thank you, Steve. I do appreciate you and giving us that detailed update that was requested. Um, yeah, just, uh, we do appreciate that effort and then figuring out how to, to get those folks moving along and do what they're supposed to be doing. So we do appreciate it. Alright. The, uh, next is gonna be you, the manager.
Steve's gonna tell us about loose leaf season, which has started.
Yeah, last little piece here, uh, we just wanted to announce that we are officially in our loose leaf season. It started November fourth. Uh, it's not as big of a change in our operations anymore like it used to be. It used to be we hired temporary people and had special trucks out. Now we pretty much do it year-round. Uh, but we do encourage folks this time of year, it is an option for them to consider. Right now, when you're getting big bulks of leaves coming down on your property, if you don't want to bag them, you don't want to put them in containers, you can just put them out of the curb. Uh, and we will get them that's not as fast as if they're bagged or containerized, but it is an option. It saves you some work if you want to do it that way. We typically do that through the month of January and that'll kind of wrap that up. So if customers do have a bunch of leaves out there, we encourage them to call nine three nine three two eight two. Let us know. That way we can make sure we get it scheduled as quick as we can. Otherwise, our, our staff, as they're doing their normal sanitation routes, will notice those piles and put them on a list.
Thank you, Steve. And I just would reiterate that, please don't blow the leaves into the drains and, uh, things that we have, uh, for water and sewer type of drainage. So, um, I think that's a city code violation as well, however. Um, but just wanted to reiterate that as well, when you put your leaves on the side of the roadway, do not push them inside of the drains, please.
Thank you.
Yes.
Mayor, I have a question for Mr. Miller, just a quick question. Justin got out there if I could ask him. But Steve, five fourteen Tower Hill Road, a resident calling me, uh, said their meter, they definitely think their meter reading was wrong. Uh, I think their bill was totaled up to about five thousand dollars. I told her to call the nine three nine three two eight two and ask for somebody to come out to check to see if she had any leaks or anything. But, uh, she's a small, single-story house, um, but if you could, just check on that for me. And, um, get, give that resident a call tomorrow sometime or nothing.
I think, uh, I'm, I'm tracking on that. I think it was something like fifty-nine hundred or something to that effect from, uh, yeah, that particular residence. I think it was an oversight, however, for sure. So, alright. Thank you.
And of course, Steve gets too far. I'm, I'm glad you mentioned the, the leaves. Be careful where you put them. I mean, if you're, if you live in a, a road where the storm drains clog, that's why they're clogging, the leaves are getting into the drain. And be careful if you cut your grass or try to mulch your leaves. Don't let it fly into the street because it does go right straight to that storm drain. And the next, uh, storm that we get, you will, it will back up into your street.
Thank you, Madam Board, for that. Uh, you're next, Madam Board.
Yes, sir. Um, Immowell's got a lot going on and other projects that Scott Austin wants to give you the update on the things they have been doing since our last meeting.
Hey, Council, um, just want to give you a quick update on a few things coming your way. Uh, Master Plan, uh, is, is getting ready to kick off. McGill and Associates will be kicking off this month and you should be seeing some contact coming your way. Um, they'll be doing some, uh, smaller, uh, focus groups, uh, with the council. Uh, so you should see some, uh, invites for their, um, some focus group invites. Uh, they're also doing some community engagement, um, at some of our soccer games, football games, and, uh, probably at Kinston, uh, Christmas parade. So you, you should see some action there. Um, the other news coming your way, um, we did recently put out a request for proposals with Lyons Water Venture. Um, uh, what you didn't notice, the contract for Swim Club has actually expired. And so we put those out for, for, uh, for proposals. And, uh, we hope to see, um, some proposals come your way at the next council meeting. Um, and it, it's, it's nothing they've done. It's just we, it's been numerous years since we've seen proposals from anybody. Um, I think more, multiple more than two to three, uh, might be up to five. So we just, that should be coming your way at the next council meeting and, uh, you should get a recommendation from us as well as, um, some different proposals your way. So, um, other than that, um, Immowell is, is progressing nicely. Um, the playground is about finished, so you should see some movement on that. Um, next council meeting, also, we're also looking at the location of the spray ground. So we will take that to you, um, at the next council meeting and show you exactly, just get your stamp of approval of, of the location of that. Uh, with the bathrooms always being an issue, we won't, we want to make sure we're put in the right place and, and have your approval on that. So, any questions?
Scott, I do appreciate you and your efforts and the entire team at Parks and Rec. The, uh, Swim Club, you, you said that you put out R F Ps?
Yep.
R F Ps, okay. That's, that's what I, I just wanted to clear, I make sure that was good. It will be in our favor as to what, uh, selection that we would like to, to make.
Yeah, we'll have that laid out for you.
Alright.
Scott, you do feel comfortable that they will put another request in Swim Club?
Yes, and, and they're very, they're very, um, willing and very looking forward to working with us again. So, um, their partnership has been good. It's not saying anything against them. It's just, uh, the process we need to do every few years. And, um, hopefully, uh, you know, we'll, we'll see how that goes. But, um, they're very excited and, you know, and willing to work with us again. So.
Alright, thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
Uh, Madam Manager.
And last but not least is D K- And last but not least is DK, uh, talking about all the Christmas events that we've got going on.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for letting me share this with you. Uh, this is a, it's for your benefit, but it's, it's also a reminder and announcement for the public as well. I want to let everybody know that on the, um, twenty, twenty-third of November this month, the Saturday before Thanksgiving, we will be turning on the holidays at Pearson Park with the lighting ceremony that we always have, that we've started it in twenty-eighteen. It's grown into quite a nice event. It starts at six o'clock in the evening. Um, there will be a, a church or two there, serving warm beverages at no charge. And there'll be song, dance, fellowship, and of course, Santa. And when the ceremony is over, uh, you can get your pictures taken at, on, uh, or well, you can take your pictures with Santa, uh, on the stage afterwards, uh, as to commemorate that. Uh, everyone's welcome to attend and we encourage everyone to come out and enjoy this night. If it's good weather, it's always a really nice time and, uh, bring your, bring your whole family and friends. It's a very family-friendly oriented, uh, event. And then on Saturday, December seventh, we have the annual Christmas parade. We do have, uh, registrations are open and are coming in, so don't wait till the very last minute. There is a deadline. Uh, we have to get those, uh, registrations to Parks and Recs so they can create the lineup and they need a few days to do that. Uh, that parade starts at, uh, the usual place and time, four-thirty PM, that's Saturday, at Granger Stadium. You can start arriving probably around noon, uh, to get in your, get your spot. Um, cars will be inspected. There will be officers there for that. We want to make sure the cars are safe. And this is just my own personal thing, if you're, if you're going to be driving a vehicle, uh, pulling a float or something, um... Oh, yeah, well, never mind. Have all that staff be able enough to do that and, and mature enough to know how to respond. Uh, the parade route is the same as before. It goes from Granger to Granger Stadium, down Granger Bull, Street or Boulevard, or is it a street, I think, uh, road, uh, to Queen Street and then down to Caswell Street. Unfortunately, this year though, for those of you who can't read the slide, for whatever reason, or listening, we are unable to permit the throwing, handing out, or tossing of any items to the crowd. Period. That is, we're very disappointed with that, but that's not our, our, um, uh, it's not our fault. But we do want everybody to have a safe and enjoyable parade. Now, this is what I want to share with you. This is in progress right now. We, this year, we will have a proper Santa Claus float and reindeer, twelve reindeer, I think. This was made at Caswell Center and is wood, painted by them as well. They made it with their CNC machine. And, uh, we want to thank Caswell Center for their involvement with this. Leighton Edmondson and Chris Raines and Tanya and Wayland Adams, who helped spearhead getting this happen and whoever else was involved that I don't know about yet. But anyway, we appreciate that. I've been wanting to have a proper Santa Claus float for a while and, and this is what happens. You know, the community comes together, they, they, uh, fulfill a need, they make stuff happen. They help us, they help us continue to make Kinston's events and downtown better every year. So I'm very, very appreciative of that. And don't forget, if you do want to ra- register for the parade, it's at downtownkinston.com. The price for registration is forty dollars. It was fifty dollars last year. Tensile Trail Registration is at the same location on the web, downtownkinston.com. Those are a hundred dollars for a hundred-dollar spot in, in Pearson Park where you can put your own lighted decorations. And Christmas sponsorships are the three-by-eight banners that you see in the photograph there. They're really beautiful and those start at five-hundred dollars. They're three feet by eight feet and you can call us to make those arrangements, five-two-five-six-one-four-four. And with that, uh, the last one on the list and we may be done for the night, right? Do you have any questions about any of these things? And don't forget, Councilman, you've got to be in the parade, right?
Yeah.
Get, so get your cars in order.
Alright.
Thank you.
Alright.
Alright. Um, alright, we look forward to seeing you, uh, Leah. I would appreciate you, um, the efforts and what you do for DK. Uh, putting that information about people registering to join the parade, so we hope folks sign up and, uh, register to be a part of the parade. Um, Madam Attorney, would you like to entertain anything? Anything from the council?
Uh, Mayor, it's a closed session for a personnel issue and that's it.
And, and Mr. Mayor, I just want to, uh, give a condolence to the, uh, Hollis. Uh, they lost their son and I just want to give, uh, condolence to their family. Um, also, uh, want to thank a lot of people that worked in the community, uh, over the weekend. We had some, uh, uh, good events, uh, this weekend and for those that participated, we appreciate you. And, uh, we just ask that our community continue to do activities and, uh, we'll try to be present, uh, to show our support for our community. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you so much. Anything further from the council?
Mayor, I just thought about it and I'm surprised Councilman Hardy didn't think, but I just want to sh- send a shout-out to our hometown native Jerry Stackhouse. I think he had his birthday this past weekend, so just wanted to send a shout-out to Stack.
Alright, happy birthday, Stackhouse.
He probably done got me in trouble, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. What is, what is it, fiftieth, uh, was that, or?
Fiftieth.
Yeah, birthday. Alright, that's, uh, Jerry Stackhouse. Alright, so having said that, um... Yep. Thank you much. Um, so we're, we're supposed to have, you know, we will be having a Small Business Town Hall with the Small Business Administration, um, hosted by, um, the City of Kinston, myself and Alan Thomas, who is the RA, RA Regional Administrator for Region Six from the Small Business Administration. I've had conversations with him today. Um, I've talked with Channel Seven. We've, I have had a conversation with them. We'll actually go on and talk about the Small Business Administration this week, on Wednesday, and how to get access to capital, how to expand or start a business for entrepreneurial individuals that need to know or understand how it works. Also, we have some of my city employees, folks there, uh, to talk about the zoning piece, uh, and many other things. Director Blunt, I do appreciate you, uh, being a part of this. But, uh, it'll be at the, um, they call it the North Carolina General, I mean, GTP, but it'll be at the airport across from the terminal at the North Carolina DOT Extension Building. Um, twenty-eight, seven, twenty-eight, I think it's fifteen, Ross Road Extension. But we have put out information and hopeful that people will sign up. We've had more registrations, um, here in the last few days. So we're looking forward to putting information out about small businesses and what, um, and what it entails, you know, and, and having those resource centers available for those that want to start a business. Hopefully, we, um, have a good turnout there, but we want to put that information out just to make sure everybody is aware of small businesses and what, and how small businesses attribute to small cities and towns and all across America. So the small businesses are the backbone of our country. So, um, that's something that we'll be doing. Uh, that's be November seventh, nine AM to eleven-thirty. Nine AM to eleven-thirty. And it'll be at the GTP or the North Carolina DOT Extension Office across from the terminal at the airport. It'll be a landmark, so the terminal across from the, um, terminal, you'll have the, uh, NC DOT Building. Um, also tomorrow, Election Day, um, City of Kinston's closed on the Election Day, um, to have you exercise your God, uh, given right to, to vote. And you have the entire day, if you haven't voted, um, to go out and vote, exercise your right to vote. Um, and I'll leave you with these words, so the, the, the right to vote is precious and it is almost sacred and is the most nonviolent tool that we have in a democratic society. And we must use it to our benefit. So I ask you this, if you haven't voted, please take your happy self to the polls to vote because there are a lot of folks that said, that shed bless, blood, sweat, and tears on the Emma Pettish Bridge to give us the right. They can't stop that. So, having said that, I entertain a motion to go to closed session.
Motion.
So move at a second. So move in properly second. Under discussion. Under discussion. And according to North Carolina General Statute, one forty-three, take three-eighteen, eleven, eight-six. One forty-three, three-eighteen, eleven, eight-six. All those that say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. We're now in closed session.